Recording in progress.
Good evening, and welcome to the June 25th, 2025 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. The public is welcome to attend our meetings in person or via alternative public access, provided on the Town of Yarmouth website. Our meetings are generally held on the first and third Wednesdays of the month, but additional meetings are added when needed, such as this evening. I'll begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Present.
Deirdre Gayquin.
Present.
Will Rubenstein. Jim Saban. Peter Slovak.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Present.
Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I'll now call the meeting to order, and I would ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is a request from a petitioner for us to approve an A and R plan, 1-977-A. I'd ask you to please refer to the memo from our planner, Town Planner Kathy Williams, June 23rd memo regarding this plan. And I welcome Karen Healy this evening from representing the petitioner. This approval of not required, A and R, you know, and A and R, is being requested by Darlene and Demetrius Misios at 116 North Main Street, South Yarmouth, Assessor Map 70, Parcel 45, and Susan Johnson, 118 North Main Street, South Yarmouth, Mass., Assessor Map 70, Parcel 44, R4 zoning district. They have already received zoning board approval. And we have the representative for the petitioner's here. But Kathy, would you like to first run through your memo in any way? Or we'll just turn it over to Karen?
I think you can turn it right over to Karen.
Okay.
I have no issues.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members. My name is Karen Healy. I'm a land surveyor with the BSC Group, and I prepared the plan for number 116 and 118 at North Main Street. The issue that happened here is that when this building was constructed, it was over the property line. So basically, we're doing a simple land transfer. This portion comes with 116, and this portion goes with 118. It's the same amount of land area, just a simple swap to make the building compliant. It has been to the ZBA, as you mentioned, and it was approved by the ZBA. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Just one, can I make that? No, neighbors are okay. The, it bothers everyone, it's fine with the transfer. No, no negative comments.
I was not at the ZBA hearing, but I cannot imagine anybody would have a negative comment other than the two people that are involved. So it doesn't affect anybody else's property line.
Just out of curiosity, I don't need to take too much time, but how does something like this happen?
Women's same thing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, how does some, how does a building get?
Back in.
Is it from way, is the building that is crossing over the property line, an older building? It's been there for a while?
It's not 100 years old, but it's not 50 either. It's somewhere, somewhere older than 50 years. There was a time when the Building Department did not require foundation ASBills for buildings. And when that happened, some builders would just go ahead and not hire a surveyor to stake it out, and the building could potentially be off the property line because of that. In today's world, the Building Department require ASBills at the time of construction, so it eliminates that issue.
And is there a reason that this came to light now that you can share with us?
A sale. A sale of the property. When somebody went out to do the inspections, they found that the property line doesn't make sense, and then we were hard to make sense of it, and this is what we found.
Okay, so we want to move this along so that that transaction didn't take place?
I'm sure they'd be very happy to get it signed off tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Healy. Appreciate it. Certainly, Peter.
Something like this can't be fixed with an easement. Is that, is that?
You're right, you can't give it, it wouldn't conform with zoning. Easements don't allow you to meet zoning regulations. They allow you to transfer out to traverse land, but they don't allow you to construct adjacent property, and definitely not on top of the property line.
Anything else, board members? Do you hear no? Okay. Kathy, did you have any, anything else? Okay, so may I have a motion to approve A and R Plan 1-977-A?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Just going to do one here? Chair has all. ancestry.com is going to have a lot of certain. Thanks again, Karen. We appreciate you coming. Next on, next on our agenda. We'll sign the paper copies afterwards, Kathy. So we'll take care of that. Okay, great. Next on our agenda is continuing discussion on our local comprehensive plan development. This evening, we're going to review and discuss some recent products we've received from the BSC Group as the Draft Capital Infrastructure and Facilities Section, which we did not submit with the original submission to the Cape Cod Commission. So you have that in your packets this evening. I had a chance to look at that earlier and have made some suggestions. So I think that what they're, what they see, what the planning board is seeing now may include some of my suggestions, Kathy. Okay. And secondly, Union Studios, Horsley Witten. In our packet, we have their report on mixed-use development, including the results of panel discussions and review of our VCOD zoning provisions and recommendations. And then finally, Kathy got word with regard to this special town meeting, and we have a schedule that we'd like to review. So Kathy, I'll turn it over to you now.
Sure, sure. I think, I know Jeff's on, but I think he's kind of going to be kind of listening and keeping track of all of our comments here. So we did work on together the capital infrastructure and facilities section. And I think I just want to emphasize, and that's in your packet, that these are large-scale capital facility and infrastructure projects specifically to accommodate anticipated future growth and development. So there's a lot of capital projects that are not large or do not necessarily are required. They're nice-to-haves, and they're important to our community for other reasons, but they're not needed for future growth. So we have included here a very brief overview of Yarmouth's municipal budget. I think there's some people out there who probably don't understand what our budget's made up of, and that we have four enterprise funds and that they kind of pay for themselves. So a brief summary there. And then just kind of an overview of the town's capital improvement plan, and then the Capital Budget Committee and what they kind of do. When we did our stakeholder interviews, they had, came up with some key issues that the Capital Budget Committee had identified. So those were really, came from them. So we kind of highlighted that that's coming from them regarding, you know, how do we fund the remaining sections of the municipal wastewater program? Making sure that we have the 10-year capital for both our municipal and school buildings? Needing a 10-year plan for rolling stock? And then also, long-range, we need to address in some fashion our long-range systematic approach to addressing shoreline protection and coastal infrastructure. Those are usually pretty big projects that cost big bucks, but don't necessarily come with any particular grants associated with it. And they're also concerned about other unknowns that may result in capital improvement projects for the town. You know, whether it's increased regulations, like we saw when the PFOS maximum contaminant level kept going down. All of a sudden, we found that wells that were fine before, now with the lower level, now we're required to have treatment. And then also, we don't really know what the severity of sea level rise and climate change may have and how that might impact our infrastructure needs as well. And then the last comment from the Capital Budget was just getting, you know, regular maintenance into the annual budget in order to avoiding things becoming so bad that we now are required to become a capital improvement project versus a general maintenance project. One of the sections that's required in the, from the Cape Cod Commission's LCP guidelines was that we needed to include some type of section that talks about our existing infrastructure systems and our challenges. This is just an overview of the major systems. It might be a little, a little light. You might want to flesh this out a little bit. It'd be interesting to see what you guys had to say. But Joanne and I had talked about some of the major systems that are here. We might want to specifically mention the library and buildings because that's a new capital project, not just a building assessments and maintenance. And then just talking about some of the recent actions that have been related to capital improvement, talking about those five facility condition assessments that were done on Town Hall, Senior Center, Fire Stations 1 and 2, and then the DNR and Recreation Building on Route 28. That was a great report. They all identified a bunch of issues. Now we're going to start pecking away at all of that. And I think Capital Budget will start seeing it in this round, some improvements on some of these buildings in order to, to, to address that, those assessments. And of course, we're also working on, the Recreation Division's working on the Recreation Capital Assessment and Field Study that they're doing. So ultimately, down the line, that'll probably result in some type of capital projects, as well as the schools also working on their five- and 10-year capital plan. And then just kind of giving a shout-out to the whole Capital Improvement Guidance Document that has really streamlined the entire process, that has really made a significant difference, I think, in moving forward with our capital improvement projects. And then the, kind of the brief introduction into the actual table that's following this, again, highlighting that these are major infrastructure projects, and they're specifically related to allowing us to do growth and redevelopment. I did want to highlight that we do have some very specific ongoing studies that are going to probably result in future capital needs. As I mentioned, there's that way-to-water assessment that's being done. There's also being a study done on Long Pond, a couple of water quality there. We have the Matta Keys Utilization Project. We also have that coastal flooding and sea level rise study south of Route 28. That'll probably identify some road projects that we need to address. We have some potential land acquisitions in the hopper, and then, of course, that recreation assessment. And then, and when Joanne and I were talking, she kind of wanted to emphasize some of the historical projects as well, some of the, that may not necessarily be town projects but are important for our community. And some of these are related to preserving our history, whether it's like restoring our historic churches, such as the South Yarmouth United Methodist Church or the Quaker Meeting House, and, you know, historic interpretive signage, and then restoring all the historic markers. And then just kind of emphasizing that although there's a lot of things that help our community and are very important to our community, we're not including everything in the kitchen sink in the, in the capital improvement. I don't know if anyone had any questions on that before we get into the table at all, or?
Any, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I mean.
From the board, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I mean, just as you know, I'm on the Capital Budget Committee. And, you know, this is, I think, a great outline and, you know, a great presentation of what we're trying to get done. There's, you know, from a capital budget standpoint every year, there's far more requests than, than what we can handle. So it is trying to prioritize what needs to be done, and how can we try, from a capital standpoint for the town, get out in front of it? And I think it's well laid out here. You know, you touched on some of the major issues. You know, coastal resiliency certainly is a huge issue. This, who knows where the numbers are going to end up there? As you touched on, you know, what's it going to take to make this town more resilient than we currently are? I can't even begin to tell you. But I know that sea level rise is a real thing, and we're, you know, we're going to have a problem here someday, and how do we get out in front of it? So we've tried this year with Bill's help, and he's been a tremendous leader in helping us head down the right path. We're trying to look 10 years out in 10-year increments, because I think if you look further than that, you're just going to go crazy. You're just going to be chasing your tail. You know, but looking at just some of the stuff you've highlighted here, you know, from the building standpoint, the library, the whole, you know, trying to get a library that's more modern and potentially one central library for the town, I think it'd be a huge improvement, rather than the, you know, West Yarmouth, Southern, but that's my opinion. Other people may think something different. The fire station on Old Main Street? That's already in floodplain, and it's a 50, 60, 70-year-old building. There's, you know, there's a problem with having a, one of our key stations in the location that it's at. So that at some point is going to need to be addressed. These are all huge issues, and I'm glad to see that they're pointed out here. But I guess what I really wanted to point out is that this is taking a look at a 10-year snapshot from a capital plan. We really can't look further than that. Who knows where funding's going to be? Who knows where free cash is going to be? Who knows what, what's going to happen? So it really, I think it's well laid out, and I appreciate the, the comments and the changes that you made.
I think the key for tonight is, as Joanne mentioned, we submitted the draft of basically all the other sections, or most of the other sections, to the Cape Cod Commission on June 18th. But we kept this one out because we wanted to work on it and run it by you. So the goal here is to make any edits, identify any edits that need to be made so that we can submit this to the commission as soon as possible. The, the one thing that I did find when I was looking at other communities and how they did it in their LCP, sometimes they would have like a capital improvements action items. We have included our capital within the areas of the different elements within the plan. I like it that way because it, it identifies very clearly that this is related to this, and this is related to that. I don't know if the commission's going to say, "No, we want to have a specific action item for that." But right now, we're including it within the various sections, which I think works better for us, I think, than that. So did you want to?
So again, just echoing what Kathy just mentioned, the expectation, the outcome for tonight that she needs from us is any adjustments or edits to this particular document so that we can send this off in draft, in draft, to the Cape Cod Commission. We'll have opportunities to see this, as well as the public to see it. And, and so we just, that's kind of the, what we need to be able to do is green-light this for Kathy tonight. So any specific comments you have on adjustments, edits, changes, or things that it might be missing, would be welcome.
And like Joanne says, we got another shot at this. This is really just, are we doing it right? Is this the format that you're looking for? Because when Jeff and I met with the, with the commission, they said this can be somewhat of a tricky section that they've identified for other communities. So are we on the right track? So that would be good to kind of just know that, where we stand, even if we're editing, adding something. The good news and the bad news is that we are making a lot of progress, so we have to keep editing the document as we're going along because progress is being made on a lot of things.
I guess, Madam Chair, I'll jump in again and say that from a standpoint of the document itself, I mean, you've outlined all the major, I mean, the list is, you know, the capital list that we saw last year was vastly larger than this. But as you touched on, there was a lot of small items that really don't belong on this list. I think you've put the major stuff on it. I think the layout is easy and understandable. I'm 100% in favor of leaving it as is and seeing if the commission kicks it back and saying, "Hey, change this, change that." But I, I can't believe that the way this is laid out and spelled out, I'd see them making a lot of changes.
They're very, they want to work with the communities. They're not trying to push anything on us, but they just want to make sure that we're covering everything that they need. And that's kind of why I went back to the template to make sure that we were hitting all of the things that they had identified under that section.
How are the priority items in terms of years? Who decides that?
Yeah, that's a good question. And that's a question I kind of have for the commission because other communities kind of say priority, two years. Now, is that to the start? Can there be a range from when we think we're going to start it and when we're going to finish it? So that, I think, is probably something that needs more thought as a community. But that's not something that necessarily the commission's going to tell us, "You have to do it within a certain time period." But this is kind of us, kind of BSC Group and myself, kind of identifying, you know, what we think might be the timeframe for, for some of these. But I think we do need to get some more clarity on what that means from the commission.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, Kathy, if there is a lot of clarity right now as far as, because the priority right now at the moment is wastewater. That's the, that is the priority. And, you know, very candidly, it's hugely consuming. You know, the, the ticket price for a sewer system in the town, as you can see, is a huge, huge number. So to, you know, to just jump in and answer Peter, that I think the priority, if you put it, you have it laid out and it happens to be the first item on your list. Because I truly believe it's the number-one thing that is consuming the town right now. And not consuming, but what I mean by is getting it done and getting this first phase is done before we can move on to the next one.
I think that's one of the other things that we need to look at is the Targeted Action Plan. I think that needs to be literally a little bit more targeted. I think basically, the, the table kind of includes every item that we had. We need to prioritize those as far as what we think the action items are in importance level as we go through. And then kind of probably summarizing the idea. And if people wanted to go back and find out exactly what we're talking about, they can look at the action item that's detailed within the plan. But the actual table of the targeted, I'd like to get that down a little bit more, because what that's going to do is say, you know, complete Phase 1 wastewater with identification of effluent. And then you could say how many years that's going to be, who's responsible for it, you know, in more of a general, in a general fashion.
Right, because.
It's like 23 pages right now.
So, because how will this actually, as a document, age in terms of time? Because the LCP, we're not going to do this again for another, how many years? So will this document become outdated more quickly in terms of the years and the times and the priority?
I think what needs to happen is there's going to need to be some monitoring, benchmarking, and revisiting this on an annual basis. And probably, I'm sure the Select Board also would probably want us to come back to them and kind of say, "Well, how are we doing on some of that?" Maybe we need to modify some of the tables in order to update them as things are getting done or not getting done. And like Ken says, there's stuff that's going to, we're not even thinking of even right now, that might pop up in five years from now, two years from now.
You have no idea.
We just don't know.
You have no idea. This is stuff that's in, in front of us right now that we do know. We know at some point, we need an elementary school with, you know, ME Small. That's, that's a given. Was there lifespan left in that school? I can't tell you that. I mean, I, I think looking at what's here in front of us, it is a 10-year document. It really is. And it's going to have to be looked at during that 10 years. And then where do we go after 10 years? Some of it will be completed, and some of it won't, you know, so.
And we'll complete other things that aren't even on here.
That's right.
The one thing in here that just jumps out at me is, you know, the drinking water supply as being part of it. And it's currently not funded, and the priority is three to five years. So it just seems, seems as though that should be maybe more important. I mean, Ken brings up the school, but at least the school says within five years, so.
I did send.
And that's tied to funding and everything else. But I mean, I don't understand why the drinking water supply is not more the priority.
Well, right now, we have enough. But I, and, and the timeframe can vary. I don't know the answers to all those questions, so I sent an email to Lori Vasala, the Water, Wastewater Superintendent, identifying that we have, have concerns about this. We have 750,000 gallons per day of new growth allocated in the sewer system. What do we have in the, in the existing water system? And if it's getting close, what are we doing in order to see what we can do to, to allow for that growth that we have identified in the sewer system and match it with the water system? She's, she's been away, so I haven't heard back from her.
I mean, there's, obviously, there's going to be a greater need for water. If we use $750,000 outgoing, that's got to be double, triple incoming, right? Incoming, so in terms of what you need.
It's all average daily flows, but.
I, I thought our gross daily was like over 4 million gallons?
3.54 million gallons per day for all eight phases. Is the average day for the, for the wastewater?
Average day for wastewater?
Yes.
Well, that's, that number's annualized because the, you know, the, the numbers in the summer are vastly different than they are in the winter, so.
Right, and that, I think, I don't know what the multiplier factor is, but there, you know, it's probably twice for max day and like four more, four, for peak, for peak day. The water system, obviously, you know, what can we pump right now? And then we have our water storage tanks that kind of help with some of those peaks during the day and that type of thing. So this is something I need more information from Lori on in order to, to identify that. But I did notice there was nothing in capital improvement for the next 10 years related to new wells or even well redevelopment or anything like that to improve and increase output. So that, that is more information that's needed.
And I do know, you know, that Capital Budget met with Lori during the process this year. And you're right, there isn't a, you know, there isn't a funding for it. The concern, you know, with the discussion as I took it really wasn't an issue on that we're going to run out of water if the town continues to, to grow. It's more about, as you were touching on, the well infrastructure system, the water piping system, everything that brings the water out of the ground and gets it to us. That really is the goal of improving that. There's plans in place right now to improve the monitoring system that's within the water system right now to know what wells are working properly, what aren't. Right now, it's, a lot of it is done manually. And they're trying to get ahead of all that. So there isn't any number because there's a lot of numbers being put together. I know that's one of the things that we're going to see this fall from Capital Budget. As a matter of fact, we're having our first meeting this coming Monday to try and get out in front of it. We already have our schedule laid out from next Monday until December 31st. Starting September 1, we're going to be meeting every Monday right to the end of the year.
Wow.
Yeah.
And you're staying on Capital Budget, Ken?
What's that?
Does that mean you're staying on Capital Budget, Ken?
Well, I think I was told to stay on until this year, so.
But that, but that is an enterprise fund. So they do have, they do have reserves. They do have a little bit of money.
I'm glad you mentioned that because it is an enterprise fund. But the one thing that we do know is there will not be enough money in the enterprise fund to do everything that needs to be done to the water system in the town of Yarmouth, just so that's out there. What the number is, I don't even want to venture a guess.
Even though they raised the water rates, we still have very, very reasonable water rates.
It's extremely reasonable compared to some other towns.
Any other, any other comments on the, again, for Kathy's purposes here? We want to try to make sure the capital piece is something we're okay to send along in draft.
Do you need a motion, Joanne, to come?
No, no, we just need a general consensus of the board.
I'm okay with it.
I mean, if there's things you want to move around in terms of the table and priorities, we certainly can do that. But from, from my perspective, I think this is, this is a good start. And it's going to change anyway.
Yeah, with water first, that's the important piece.
Okay, everyone?
Could I just, I don't know if you can hear me. I just have one quick comment. I want to thank Kathy for, for helping put this together. And just one observation about the priority list. And I think this is more for when we, when we release this for the public comment and, and ultimately, when you get to town meeting. You know, they, we're setting a priority on some of these projects, but I think it doesn't have to go in for tomorrow to get this to the Cape Cod Commission. But I do think something, a sentence in there to say that the priorities may shift over time because if, for example, there was, you know, a large amount of federal funding made available for PFOS treatment or, or water quality treatment, you know, those types of projects, if there's funding available, might move up in a faster timeline. But just kind of creating that, that flexibility within this, you know, because you're going to get people at town meeting who might really look at the priority level, get people at town meeting who might really look at the priority level, and it's not absolute set in stone. There, there has to be some flexibility in this to allow for, for changes or funding or, or opportunities that might raise up a project faster than it was charted out here. So, like I said, I don't think it needs to go into the draft for, for getting it to the commission, but I do think just creating that, that observation, a little bit of flexibility in this document to, to let people kind of know that that might shift a little bit.
But, but I think the, the important point that Peter has made is we need to define what that, what that word means on this chart. We, yeah, we need to, we need to come to some consensus on what we think that means and, and, and be able to articulate that as we go forward.
And Madam Chair, just based on what Jeff mentioned, I'd actually even put it a little stronger and say, the priorities will shift over time based on conditions. Whatever the, we can't predict what's gonna happen in five, 10 years. I mean, he's right with the word "may," but I'd actually like to see it a little, little stronger.
Yeah. To me, a, a natural, important, you know, high priority would be a contract that's already awarded, that's a six-year contract.
Right.
That clearly is, that's a no-brainer. Or one that's out to bid. One that's in, in someone's dreams, well, less so. But that's, I think, what, what would be helpful to, so that we all agree and, and the town agrees what that, what that column means. What do we, what do we define that as?
Maybe it's not a priority column. Maybe it's more of a timeframe column. I don't...
There you go. Is this, is this format the commission format, Kath, or is this ours?
I think they say priority that they're looking for, but I can look at it. And we can change it. We can say what we think it needs to be. So, what, what was your suggestion?
I mean, it's more of a timeframe. It's more of a, it really, it doesn't identify what's a priority or not. It just, three to five years on water supply. I mean, that doesn't really say if it's a priority or not. Is it a priority in three years from now or four years from now or five years from now? I think it's priority.
Yeah, I think that's where the Targeted Action Plan would, would help dovetail some of this. I think, you know, maybe the structure of this chart, we, once we figure out how we want to treat the, the Targeted Action Plan, and we expect to get some feedback from the Cape Cod Commission on that, you know, that might help define a timeline or a priority for this, for this chart as well.
The commission, if I recall, is low, medium, and high, right?
That's right, it is.
So, why don't we adjust the ti, the header here to timeframe? Peter, is that what you're thinking?
That was the first thing I made.
Instead of priority?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Jeff, that's okay with you?
I think that would be okay with me, and Kathy's been working on this too, so if we can change that header, you know, and then submit it to the commission, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Great. Any, any other, any other specific comments on this? Okay, so we have something that's good to go. Okay, great.
I think just briefly, we could talk about the schedule.
Uh, sure.
I've right now did talk to the Select Board about special time town meeting, and they're going to do it, I think. They haven't formally voted, but it seems very favorable that they'll do it on November 17th, which is nice, 'cause it gives us a couple extra weeks than what we had originally been thinking. So, I've included in your packets, kind of trying to get an idea of where we stand with regard to the schedule. As you mentioned, we sent out the, the bulk of the draft of the LCP to the Cape Cod Commission on June 18th. We've got a good handle on the capital. We'll also make those few minor edits and send that out tomorrow. But on July 9th, we've asked the commission to provide their comments to us, and they've kind of set, made it sound like they were gonna be able to do that. And this is where things get a little dicey, a little bit tight, is, you know, I don't, we don't really know how many comments the commission's gonna have. If they have, "Oh, it looks really good. We just want this little here and this little there," we're probably in, in pretty good condition to go out, you know, to meet on the 16th, have a good idea at our regular meeting of whether we feel good about going out for our 30-day public comment period. Right now, it's tentatively shown as being from July 18th to August 18th. We've got going to the Select Board in between there on their August 5th meeting. I just put in our continually, put in our regular meetings with an idea what we might want to talk about. Obviously, we also have, I've included in here all the discussions that we have to do under zoning amendments, which we haven't even gotten really teeth into quite yet. So, I've, I've included those conversations in here. So, and I've, I've given a little bit of flexibility with regard to when we're gonna be, be meeting to review the LCP public comments. And again, we don't know how many public comments are gonna be provided. It could be something very simple to do, so I have a, a little extra week there either on August 20th or on August 27th. You mean to be in the planning board, if I'm not mistaken? Okay. Sometimes people come in wandering in and they really want FinCom or they want somebody else.
Good for you.
That's excellent.
Or just air conditioning.
It actually feels like it's not even on.
I know.
I can, I can adjust that. But September 3rd, you know, we're basically hoping that we can have the public hearing for the LCP on September 10th. It gives us a little bit more time. And then we need our warrant language, draft warrant language by the 12th of September. The 17th, we're hoping to have the public hearing on the zoning amendments then, so we're gonna be very busy. And then they need the final draft of the warrant is, needs to be submitted by the 30th. And then the big, October 21st is the latest date with which we could present our zoning amendments to the Select Board as well as, they may want to meet with us earlier on the LCP, but that would be the last date that we could meet with them, because then they need to approve the warrant that night. And, and then special time meeting would be on the 17th. And then we could meet in December and see what we need to do to move it forward with getting it to the commission for their certification, 'cause there's another public hearing from the board as well. So, just busy.
So, this, based on the schedule, Kathy, the Select Board will see a draft August 5th, and then the next time they'll see something would be October?
Yeah, I think it'll be some time in between there in all honesty. I'm just saying that's the last date that we could do the presentation.
I see, okay, okay.
Yeah, when, when are they meeting? They meet, oh, I don't have it right here. Oh, no, here, I have it here. Yeah, they meet on the, the Select Board meets on the 23rd of September. They meet on October 7th.
Right.
So, any of those meetings would work. I would prefer to get it in earlier and just leave the zoning for the 21st.
Okay. Any, any questions on the schedule? Okay. I do, we, I know we wanted to move on...
What's that?
I, we're gonna pick up with the BSC group, right?
I think we're, we're done. I, the LCP, I did include in your packets the full, a copy of what was submitted to the Cape Cod Commission. Feel free to review it. I am going to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. I know that Jeff is going to be looking at it and his crew as well. And I've also asked them to start working up a list of the maps and the graphics and things that that would be included, 'cause we need to continue working on it, even though we don't have the, hoping that we're fine with the Cape Cod Commission, 'cause we can't wait to get their comments and then move forward from there, because there's a lot more things that need to be done.
In, in that regard, I mean, I did start taking a look at the, the matrix, because it's kind of the first time we've seen, seen this. How, what kind of, what kind of calendar would you like on comments and edits and changes to that? How, how quickly would you, that, you know, most of it, we've seen the, the, the word portion, but I think the, the matrix part is, is relatively new. And I've already gone through it. I have some comments, but just wondering, what timeframe are you looking at for that?
Maybe we can, Jeff chime in as well. That's kind of what I was talking, I think it, it's 23 pages, and we need to do something to get this more targeted, I think, 'cause I remember when we met with the commission that they were really talking about, these are your targeted action. We have great actions, but I don't know whether it's just not a verbatim copying of those action items, but something smaller. Maybe we're condensing them in a slightly different way, and then, then it becomes, you know, the prioritization. I think most of those things that are on the list, quite frankly, are high. If they're super low, then they're probably not.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if Jeff has anything with regard to a, to a timeline, but probably, if you have any ideas with regard to prioritization, 'cause the ideas are still there, the action items are still there.
Right. I think there can be some, you know, my read of it is there can be certainly some condensation of the language. I know that we just kind of ripped what we had and threw it in here.
Right.
And there's, I think there's some, there's some language that can definitely be condensed. But I, I do have a question in terms of the, the submission and how this is organized on the matrix. If the action item under a goal is action one, does that make it the most important?
I think that's the insinuation, so that's why I'm wondering whether we might want to look at that as putting them in this particular order.
So, this is my net instant... I was gonna jump in real quick, 'cause I, I think, I think getting, like Kathy said, getting ideas or making, thinking about how you would prioritize them. I, I personally am thinking that it would be helpful to get the feedback from the Cape Cod Commission before we do too much work, because I think there's two elements, which is the Targeted Action Plan, and then there's the matrix. And the guidance suggests the Targeted Action Plan is the required item. The matrix is kind of the, is all the actions listed in one place. And so, I think that one of our options would be to wait to see how the Cape Cod Commission looks at what we have listed for Targeted Action Plans and tells, and if they suggest that, you know, one or the other needs to be more targeted. What we did, just for getting, getting the matrix populated, is I think what Joanne said, is we took all the targeted action items that had already been identified, and we put them into the matrix. And we did want to have the conversation about condensing the language, which we could do that now if it's a, if it's a mirror copy, but we didn't want to go too far into editing and changing all the actions, kind of until we heard from the Cape Cod Commission. It's, it's an important kind of pivot point for us.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's an important point, Jeff. Thank you. And we're expecting July 9th-ish, that, that week, to hear from them? Okay, so we'll wait to hear from them on, on that. And I only ask the question about, again, I know there's a column for priority on this, low, medium, high, on the matrix. But I was just curious as to whether the, the listing of the actual action items also sets a priority? Because as an example, on the very first page, on Water Resources Waste Management, the rack is the number one.
It's the rack.
Rack for me would be the last.
I think when we had, when we met with the Select Board, I think that was kind of their general feeling is what's most important comes kind of first. These, these were kind of put in, what are the ideas, and we got them all down. But I do agree with you, and I almost moved that one around. I think we, we, as the planning board, should decide what the priorities we think in the order, and then what does the public say during the public comment period?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and kind of move things around. I think the insinuation is that the order matters, even though it may not, per se.
And it could change tomorrow. I mean, we, we might think it's important today, but as you've said, as Mr. Ken Smith has said, it could all change tomorrow.
Right.
So, okay. So, we'll wait to hear from the commission on that one. Okay. Should we move on to Union Studios and Horsey Witten?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi there, how you doing?
Doing well. We're in air, we're in air-conditioned spaces, so we're doing just fine.
Thank you.
All right, Kathy, do you want us to jump right in?
Kathy's adjusting Aria Conditioning. She'll be right with you.
All right.
She's turning it on.
Hopefully, we're having a little bit of technical reviews, but hopefully you can see the slides now, and you'll just direct me to move through them as we did before.
Yeah, we can see them.
Okay, excellent. So, have at it.
All right, well, great. Good evening, everybody. As a reminder, my name's Jeremy Lake with Union Studio. I'm joined tonight by my colleague Erica Thornton and Nate Kelly from Horsey Witten as well. Nate was with us last time. You couldn't see him, you couldn't get connected, but he was listening in, and he's gonna be a big part of the conversation tonight, so I'm glad he was able to get patched in appropriately. So, I'm just gonna do a kind of a quick recap of where we are, what we've been working on, and then I'm really gonna pass it off to the two of you to kind of walk you guys through the, the bulk of the content that we want to talk about tonight. So, Kathy, you want to go ahead to the next slide? Again, as a reminder, I think our real point of emphasis, emphasis here is the Village Center overly district. That's what we've been discussing so far and what we've been really, really diving into. Go ahead to the next slide. As a reminder of our schedule, it's been a fairly quick effort. We kicked off back in late April, and tonight is our sort of final meeting with you guys. We are intended to sort of wrap up our piece of this work by the end of the month, which is Monday. So, you know, based on what we talked about here tonight, we'll kind of wrap up everything we've been working on in the final report, get that submitted, and hopefully that tees you guys up for all these important next steps that you're talking through. Go ahead to the next slide. And just as a reminder, when we were in front of you guys two weeks ago, you know, I think that the bulk of what we talked through were these three sort of schemes or scenarios or, you know, yield studies, just to kind of give you some visualizations of some of the things that we were talking about. And as you'll recall, we looked at these generic sites. One was an acre, one was two acres, one was three acres, and just played around with some things like, was it a corner condition or not? You know, some of, some of the other contextual things that might be trying to play off of. And in each condition, we showed, you know, a mixed-use strategy, typically commercial on the ground floor along the main drag with some residential units above. On the three-acre site, we even included some residential units in the back that didn't have commercial underneath of them. And as we described at the time, there's a lot of variables that could be at play, so we tried to simplify things just to make it apples to apples and drew these up, assuming, you know, a typical unit was 1,000 square feet, 'cause we didn't know what unit types were potentially being proposed. We didn't really know what the uses were, so we just did sort of generic, you know, averages for some of the parking requirements. We looked at two per thousand as the sort of retail requirement, and we were at 1.25 spaces per residential unit. Again, just to help us generate these visualizations, show you what we were, we were seeing, or talk, start to talk a little bit about some of the challenges we were coming across. And really, I think the, the three main things we want to talk through with you guys tonight are, one, there was a request that what would these look like if we had parked the residential at two spaces per unit, 'cause that's a pressure point that you guys have heard a little bit about. So, in, in a minute, Erica, we'll kind of walk you through what those look like. Two, we were able to host a, what was called a fiscal feasibility panel, which was really just a conversation with a couple of local developers who have been trying to, you know, work on this very issue in this very, this exact setting. And they gave us a lot of sort of great input around the things that they're sort of butting their heads against, challenges they're facing, things that they think that would be useful. And so, we're gonna try to summarize that conversation for you tonight, which Erica is also gonna do. And then I'm gonna pass it over to Nate, and Nate's gonna walk through, you know, he's, he's been reviewing the zoning, and we have a number of recommendations around, again, what we've been hearing in our conversations with you guys, what we came up across when we started doing these studies, some of the things we were hearing about when we were meeting with the developers. And again, teaming you guys up for the sort of next stage, the next efforts that are coming. But, again, really wanted to sort of highlight some, some big-picture issues that we think are, are definitely something you guys should consider. So, with that, I think I will pass it off to Erica to walk you guys through the revised schemes.
Great. Thanks, Jeremy. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. All right, so, first off, so as Jeremy mentioned, I'll walk through just sort of the comparison from the previous schemes that we showed on June 4th, and then looking at the sort of same commercial parking ratio, but then increasing the residential parking ratio to two dwelling units per unit. So, on the one-acre site, this is sort of the simplest. Once you, with the commercial, you end up with 20 spaces left, so you end up only being able to fit the 10, 10 residential units on the space. And so, this, we're showing about two to two-and-a-half-story building. You could do it two and a half with the 1,000 square feet per unit, but if, you know, I did put two there, because theoretically, if you did have some smaller unit sizes, you could probably get that into two stories. And so, this brings the density down from where we originally had 16 dwelling units per acre. Now, you're down to 10 dwelling units per acre. So, it increases your commercial ratio, the percentage to 44% of the site versus 56 residential.
So, so again, in this particular scheme, it, it doesn't look particularly different, but as Erica's highlighting, you lose, you know, six of the 16 units that you would've had, because you just need to accommodate that many more parking spaces for the couple units you have. So, this one, it looks a little bit funny, 'cause they look the same, but you'll see as we get to the other ones, they'll be a little bit more of a visual impact.
All right, move on to the next slide. So, for this side, this is the two-acre site. So, this one, it's a, it's a little bit different. And so, when you look at the commercial parking, we have 28 spaces, the way this works out now. But I'll, I'll backtrack into this first. So, when we looked at, what we did with all of these scenarios, I wanted to, as Jeremy mentioned before, we sort of had these assumptions that we made, and so we kept most of those the same, but also wanted to say, well, let's look at this and make sure we keep into account the base, you know, zoning, that you want to keep that commercial mixed-use percentage on Route 28. So, I know some of the scenarios we had showed before sort of didn't really take that into account necessarily, so we, we've kept that through with all of these studies. So, when you do that, we ended up here where you have those two commercial mixed-use buildings on the front. We end up with 14,000 square feet of commercial, which is 28 spaces. And then for the residential units, that puts a little bit of pressure. So, you could imagine, yeah, maybe a developer might keep all three buildings along the street and decrease the height, but really, that means less units overall. And so, there's a little bit of a pressure there to maintain the height at three stories, which is permitted, which gets the residential units up to 28 units, and you can, you can have your parking that, you increase the parking where that building has been removed. So, you end up with 56 spaces at that two-per-dwelling unit. So, only a slightly less increase than the first scenario in density. So, you end up with, instead of 16 dwelling units per acre, you have 14 dwelling units per acre, and a fairly similar percentage in your ratios from commercial to residential. So, it's dropped from 36% commercial to 33, and 60, instead of 64% residential, you're now at 67. Next slide.
Erica, can I ask just a general question?
Yeah.
The, and I, I think I, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm, I'm not sure.[1709.11] The parameter there on two units per 1,000 square feet for commercial is our requirement as per the zoning, right?
It's sort of an average of what we looked at as the requirement, not taking into account that some of the parking requirements are based on occupancy and not square footage.
Like restaurants and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yep. So that would, you know, increase parking as well, potentially, but then you do also have a shared parking provision. So, you know, you might end up at three per 1,000 if shared parking was allowed to be used, or something like that. So it would really depend on the uses, and since we didn't really know that in this scenario, that adds a lot to the equation. We kind of just averaged out what we saw in the zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Are there any other questions on that? Go to the next slide.
Actually, let me just follow up. In your experience, is two per 1,000 kind of a standard for this kind of commercial mixed-use development?
I could jump in and say that that's-
Thank you, Jeremy.
That's relatively low. Again, it is so use-dependent, it's kind of hard to know. But I will say, when, you know, when I'm tasked with just doing a generic loading study to start a project off, I'm usually probably assuming four per thousand is a starting point, is what I think is a more sort of conventional average. So in a way, the two per thousand for the commercial is ambitious. But again, it's so use-dependent without knowing the uses, it's a little bit tricky. And I do think that Erica mentioned the provision for shared parking. It's one thing we also couldn't really factor in, because we don't really know the uses, but I do think it is fair to assume that there could be some shared, you know, scenario. So if the two per thousand sounds a little low, and the residential sounds a little low, well, maybe it still kind of works out on average, if you, you know, can actually do some amount of shared parking, so.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
Kathy, are you able to go back one to the three-acre site?
Liam has to do that in the back room. Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay. So for the three-acre site, a little bit similar in that we lose buildings on the site like we did with the two-acre. However, with this one, we were able to say, well, let's keep that, still, all of the buildings are lining each of the streets in the corner. So we have the, again, we maintain that mixed-use frontage along Route 28, and then we kept the residential buildings lining the corner street. And then the two buildings in the back were removed in order to account for adding more parking for the residential units. So for this one, we end up going from 17.3 dwelling units per acre down to 14. So it's, and then it's 24% commercial to 76 residential. So, and it added about, just about 20 spaces. So we're at 42 units to 84 spaces, and the commercial, all of them into the same in this scenario.
So basically, we lost 10 units as a result of having to accommodate for additional parking.
Okay. Are there any questions on those three case studies before we move into the fiscal feasibility?
Yes, Mr. Slovac.
Did you consider or analyze how this layout might work on a non-corner lot position?
Not in this size.
I don't think in this scenario, yeah, we weren't tasked with that particularly, but-
Yeah, I will say that, yeah, non-corner condition gives you a lot more flexibility in the sense that you don't have sort of the two edges that you feel as if you should be trying to hold, right? So I do think it gets easier, if you're a non-corner condition, to accommodate that much more parking in the back and still, you know, provide the frontage along the main drag.
But in this example, putting the number of buildings you have on a non-corner might be more difficult, right?
Potentially, yeah. I think you could still do it. I think what's, you know, even in our first example there on the left, we had a few buildings that were sort of back off of the frontage of the roads. So we were trying to create a little internal green space, so they would still feel like they have frontage and things like that. So, you know, I don't think it's impossible to imagine, even if this wasn't a corner site, you could still have five buildings. It'd be hard to get all five of them up on the main road, potentially. But I still think there's ways you could be clever about designing that, where they would feel not like they were sort of lost in a sea of parking.
Thank you.
Great.
I will say, with regard to this site, this change in terms of the alternate, just from my personal opinion, I like much better than the original with those two small buildings in the back that were trying to accommodate, you know, 10 extra residential units in two relatively small buildings. I don't know, it seems like the layout feels better with the additional parking, the alternate site. I'm curious as to your opinion, Erica or Jeremy, on that. Do you have a sense of which one of these you like better?
I mean, I think I would suggest, well, I'll give you one thing that we were thinking a little bit about, is in this scenario, there was an assumption that there might be residential neighbors just behind. And I'm sure depending on the neighbor, they might prefer that there are other homes on the other side of that property line versus cars and headlights. Another resident might say the inverse, like, I don't want somebody living 20 feet away from me, I'd rather have a parking lot. So I think in that sense, it's a little bit agnostic. I do think, big picture, you know, I think the hope here is to get that much more housing, you know, built out in Yarmouth. And so, you know, I don't think it's an unreasonable approach, the one that has those two buildings sort of tucked back in there, and that gets us 10 more units, which is great. But again, there's so many variables at play, like what are those units? How much parking might those need? What are the uses of the commercial spaces? You know, it's a little hard to, you know, to know. So I don't know that I'd say I prefer one or the other. I was glad in both scenarios, we were able to do something where at least the buildings were what were up on the frontages, and so you don't sort of see a big, you know, because it's a fairly large parking area that we're showing in the back of this by the time all said and done. And so the fact that either scenario at least takes care of holding up the edges of the streets, I think was the real win.
Right. I just think that the two smaller standalone buildings, I would think, because they're standalone, would cost a fair amount more than if they had just been somehow 10 or eight, or some portion of those units could be incorporated in the other buildings. I mean, I'm guessing, not knowing, that standalone structures automatically cost more than trying to have an extra couple of apartments in a building. I'm just guessing that.
That's a good guess.
Just the plumbing, the access, the, you know, the doors, the windows, the whole thing.
Yeah. The only nuance I will add is that there are triggers in the building code where if they're standalone, maybe they don't require, you know, the same level of sprinklers or, you know, things along those lines. I also say that one of the things we were trying to show, for instance, on the two larger footprints that are there, those are eight-unit buildings on two floors, because we were assuming there were four units per floor. And if you can limit a building to four units per floor, you only need a single egress stair. So there's one stair in the middle that feeds all of those units. And the second, you add a fifth unit per floor, a sixth unit per floor, now you need two sets of stairs, a corridor that connects them. So there are these little things that do have an incremental cost to them. I think as a general statement, you are correct, that if you can consolidate things into larger footprints, it does generally save. But I will also say that there are these kind of thresholds in the code that you need to be aware of, that may or may not, you know, actually end up saving you that much money in the long run. Or the smaller buildings, if they're maybe just townhouses, might be a higher value unit. So even though it might cost more, it might be offset a bit by what you're actually able to charge or get for rent for those units. So I think your intuition is correct, but I would just say it's more nuanced than that, really, in the end.
Thank you.
So for the, we have the fiscal feasibility panel discussion next. So here, we're just, I'm just showing some of the questions that were sent to the panel prior to, and some of the questions and discussion that we had during the session as well. And so really, it was a discussion about what are sort of some of these advantages and disadvantages that come along with financing mixed-use projects? What's the market like in Yarmouth, or what type of resident they might see? And what can the town do? What is some of the challenges developers face? What are they, what sort of issues do they see when they try to develop in Yarmouth? And what kind of incentives can the town provide in order to encourage more mixed-use development? Next slide. And so the first set of, I've broken these into two slides here. It's a lot of text, but I'll try to just summarize it. The first discussion I've broken out here is discussing sort of the financing and the market scenarios. And so we heard from the team of developers that we had on the call that mixed-use buildings can be an advantage if you have a scenario where there's already a market, there's existing buildings that, existing businesses that they can use to leverage, that the banks can see that as a favorable scenario. But there is something to consider in that we, you know, we've probably heard this a bit, but it's not a build it and they will come kind of recommendation for that. There's a limit to the amount of retail and commercial that the market's going to support. We also heard that senior housing and high-end residential are sort of the current market, but that there's definitely an opportunity, as well as probably a very large need to provide workforce housing and housing to younger professionals. And so there was a lot of discussion about, you know, being able to have an owner who can maybe rent out upper units, have residents above them, rent those out to either employees or other tenants, or maybe it's younger professionals in town that wouldn't mind, who would like to live in those sort of mixed-use properties. They also highlighted that financing projects has become very difficult. This may not come as a surprise to many of us, but that the costs to build are just very, very high right now. And so developers need to push, they need to get more units on a project to make it viable. So some numbers we heard were 25, up 25 or more. Obviously, that's sort of just sort of an estimate that probably depends on a lot of factors, sort of what type of project it is, if it's all mixed-use or all residential, or some variable in between. And they also highlighted that the market in Yarmouth can be challenging because the rents are lower than other areas that they develop in. So events that are closer to Boston, places that are served by rail, can charge those higher rents that make the project a little bit more viable. Next slide. And so the last portion that I'll touch on here before handing this over to Nate is the zoning and permitting processes, as well as the development incentives. So we heard that certain things that really make a project more difficult to finance or to make the costs work, as well as to encourage the developer to want to come forward and present a project. And it'd be that site and design standards can add costs to the construction. Sort of the, you know, we heard that banks aren't, they're agnostic to the design standards. So they don't provide more money just because you're providing a nicer-looking building. Affordability requirements bring down on that net revenue. They also highlighted that if you could modify the zoning requirements, some of the discussions we've had during these couple of sessions center around this as well, having more by right uses, increasing the height, higher density, not having minimum unit sizes, that those requirements actually in the end sort of make it so that there's less units on the project, which makes it less feasible. And also that if there's some sort of limit to the uses that they can put on the site, that could also make it not feasible for them. So simplifying the permitting process and making it more predictable. We heard that they felt that, you know, there's, and this isn't just unique to Yarmouth, but that there's a lot of overlapping stakeholders, there's a lot of committees, there's a lot of steps to get a project approved, and that's quite costly. And they're sort of, when they don't know the outcome, they're not sure, but they're less likely to present for the project. Another issue that came up was the sewer. So there was just sort of a general request that if the town could clarify when the completion of the sewer project, that would help developers plan. And I will say that some did say that, you know, you can, sort of, if you get enough units on the project, that you can disperse the costs of the sewer, the current cost of putting sewer in over those units. But I think that it was still highlighted that having that timeline, having that understanding will help owners plan for what they can expect. And then lastly, under zoning and permitting processes, we heard that the current parking requirements and this type of mixed-use and development of one-and-a-half cases per unit did not seem to be an issue, as long as there's not a lot of those larger family unit sizes, the two-to-three-bedroom sizes. So lastly, the development incentives, some things that were highlighted from the developers, that town grants were the sort of the preferred route, just, you know, basically handing a check out for the development, which they see as, you know, they just did want to highlight that's obviously tax revenue back to the town when it comes back through increased growth. But also tax incentives, and also that potentially the town could look into state grants that might be available. And another incentive would be, it's sort of, this is sort of both, probably falls under the permitting and incentives, but just to create sort of a one-pager, a guideline to sort of what the steps of the process to get approved, what types of development is the town looking for, things along that nature, sort of a quick read that they can get their hands on to understand what that process is. I think there was a lot of information to put out there, but if there's any questions, feel free, or we can pass it along to Nate to get to the review of the zoning provisions.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Erica. Appreciate that. We'll continue.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Glad I could join, see on my face, hear my voice tonight. And it was great to come back to this work. As you know, this is work that we had helped with in this original conception. And so we developed, I think, a fairly detailed memorandum for you all to sort of go through this piece by piece. It was no surprise, you know, BSC Group did great work, and they looked at this bylaw as well. So there's a lot of common observations, a lot of common themes, and the early observations that Union had as well. So I think we're, in many respects, we're all reinforcing a lot of the issues here as we look at this as outside professionals. And I think hopefully, our memorandum just went into a little bit more detail on some of these items. And I'm going to go through some of the highlights. It would take quite a long time to go through all of the minutia of this. But, you know, again, you've heard some of this stuff, but I'll hit the high points here as we go through. So relative to permitting, this was just mentioned with the developer discussion and others that have talked about this. There's the interplay between site plan review and special permit. And one observation I wanted to make, because I hear the way this gets talked about, either in the board discussion last week with, you know, folks coming to the microphone or with the board themselves. This is a minor point, but I think it's important. I think you all know that site plan review is essentially a by right mechanism. It's just a more robust review. But of course, if you meet the standards of the bylaw, the town is compelled to approve. That is the definition of by right. I think it's just important for you all to maintain this messaging as you're going through, because a lot of folks are asking for more by right, more by right. There are some places where you can offer more by right, but that is included in the site plan review process. And making sure that the public understands that and applicants, I think is going to be important for you all as you continue. More substantively, you know, I remember we talked about this issue way back when, when we started this, about the special permit granting authority. It just wasn't something that the board at the time wanted to take on, but you kind of feel like this is, I mean, you know, I recognize it's sort of a change in operation, and that can be scary for a community, and it's kind of the way we've always done things. But this is, this could really move the needle, I think, is if you switch the special permit granting authority to the planning board. I mean, there's still that focus on making things by rights, but you've strategically provided some areas of relief within the bylaw that keeps folks out of the variance process, which is important. And if you could combine a planning board special permit with the site plan in tandem, like not sequentially, you're taking potentially months off the permitting process. And that's incredibly valuable to the applicant, and it's valuable to everybody involved for these goals. So I think that's an important one that we would sort of put at the top of the list. With regard to the use table, you know, you heard this from the BSC Group, and we will reinforce, you know, the table has over 50 notes on it today. And that just, you know, as professionals who write a lot of zoning, if we're sort of stepping into a community for the first time, that suggests to us that, you know, you probably do for an overhaul of your use table. It's a bigger effort and a bigger conversation, but it's something to think about going forward. Another general observation is that, you know, as a lot of you probably know, communities are getting more granular with the way they talk about housing types. So townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, all sorts of different quote-unquote "missing middle" types, cottages. And so considering expanding the menu that you have in the use table may be beneficial to help you sort of think through these different options. And then another option I noticed here was, you know, the employee housing. And I think potentially with, you know, real reason here, good reason, is fairly tightly restricted. Certainly in the VCOD, it's not allowed, or with limited exception. But, you know, as someone who is a, you know, I'm the president of a company who is headquartered in Sandwich, Mass., and, you know, we're white-collar jobs, and we're struggling to bring people to the Cape because of the housing issue. And so, you know, it's an issue that I see firsthand as an employer. And so, you know, it's an issue that I see firsthand as an employer. So I think, you know, considering revisiting that piece is probably in everybody's best interest. Next slide, please. Looking at the use table specific to the VCOD. So again, there's about 130 uses, and we went through this line by line and identified in the VCOD, there are 38 with at least some subtle difference. Even if it was just a note, we marked those. Of the 38, there were only 12 differences between VC1 and VC2, so on the sort of western edge there, western half, I should say. And in the eastern half with the VC3 and the VC4, there's only 11 differences. So there was a lot of alignment when you looked at those paired together. But overall, even, you know, looking across all four, we really looked at this and thought, you know, I think you could combine this into a single district. There's probably, you know, eight to 10 issues, eight to 10 differences that needs to be ironed out, whether one area has a special permit difference or a different note. But we do believe it's feasible. So as you go into this, we recommend that you, you know, you see that as a real possibility, that this could be one orderly district. And then a sort of a very singular thing, getting back to that housing piece, that housing menu, as it were, even if you didn't expand the menu, we do think that allowing duplexes is something that could be added in here as potentially infill opportunities on some of the edges and some of the smaller parcels, that could be something to think about. Intensity of use, so this is where you get into your dimensions. There's already been plenty of discussion about the height. And you see the diagrams that the Union developed. Those buildings are significantly taller than the 35 foot limitation that you have there. So very attractive, very, you know, desirable configurations go through that numeric ceiling. We really do think that you should regulate on story alone, if anything. As Jeremy has mentioned, the way you, the way stories are thought of traditionally is like, oh, 10 feet per story, and it's really not the case, especially in these mixed use buildings where when you go sort of grade to ceiling, like in the interior of that first floor ceiling, you could be talking 15 feet of space right there if folks really want to create a nice spacious commercial environment. So I think that is really a place where you've set some unintended limits that you could easily take away if you just take away the number. I think considering significantly smaller lots would help. This could help with pathways to ownership. If you were to, for example, consider cottage type subdivisions on the financial side, this really helps with natural affordability, this helps with financing, and it's something boards don't often think about because you're getting behind the curtain on the pro forma. But again, it could really look like everything you wanted, but on the ground, you would have significantly smaller lots and that would just provide more flexibility without creating, you know, any sorts of design issues because you have great design oversight here. Reducing frontage, so of course, if you reduce lots size, you've got to reduce frontage. And then there were some small surgical changes to the setbacks we recommended. And a lot of this came from our discussion with Union as they started to sketch these things out. You know, you're turning the corner off 28 and all of a sudden the setbacks, you know, sort of jump back. And these are small items where we think you can make some adjustments and, you know, every foot is precious in these environments when you're trying to get these projects to pencil out. So I think there's some small modest changes there on the setbacks that wouldn't have any material detriment, it would be beneficial and provide design flexibility. Next slide, please. Intensity views continued. Impervious cover limitations, you know, this is something that the town, I think, has been regulating for a very long time. And we, you know, this is not a bad standard, but in these environments, in these sort of mixed use environments, it's almost a false standard. Like where you should be, when you're worried about impervious cover, you're worried about heat impacts, you're worried about stormwater runoff, you're worried about recharge, like those sorts of things. And regulating the design of stormwater management, regulating the landscaping and the design controls, that's really how we recommend this issue get managed, not with sort of a blunt instrument of just blanket impervious cover. And in a very similar sense, the density caps, like this is another one where it is almost sort of a false standard, where density in these environments is really firmly regulated by parking, you know, market driven parking and your parking requirements. So, you know, you saw this play out in the sketches. There were no super alarming densities being proposed in those very desirable configurations, and the parking was really driving, you know, the residential density in that piece. So we think that removing density caps would do nothing but benefit. And then I think the other piece that Jeremy alluded to is if you did bump up against that density cap, say you were capped at eight units per acre, as you are in some of these districts, and you could get 12, you know, based on some of these sketches, or 14, you know, that's a significant hit on the financial side. And it's also encouraging developers then to make those eight units as big and luxurious as possible. So they're going to be very expensive to try to sort of cover that gap. Mixed use requirements, you know, again, this was like a really heavily debated discussion back in 2011, 2012. And the intent, of course, is to try to make sure that you're getting as much of that commercial as you can. Back then, it was hard to occupy commercial space and it's gotten dramatically more difficult. So we think there are ways you could still call for commercial on Route 28 with some, you know, maybe slight exceptions from one situation to another. But we do think that, you know, potentially removing those numeric requirements, relying on design to govern that and giving a little more market flexibility could be beneficial to that. And then one of the sort of broader questions, and I alluded to this with the use table, is comparing the sub-districts. Beyond use, we looked at setbacks, building height, so setbacks, there were minor differences from one sub-district to the next. Building height, no difference. Inclusionary zoning provision, there was a specific difference in the VC2 that I think may no longer be relevant to that area. Kathy could confirm that for me or give more background. Residential density, we strongly suggest us removing that for the reasons already discussed. And then the design standards, like going through this, it really comes down to light posts and fencing are like the two substantive differences in that. And there was a desire that, you know, it would be a little more human scale on the VC1, VC2 side, perhaps a little more intense, bigger scale on the VC3, VC4. But we don't, we don't think that that's necessarily, should keep you from thinking about combining these districts. Next slide, please. Parking and loading. So there has been discussion about increasing the multifamily parking to two spaces per unit. It sounds like there's been some history in terms of requesting relief. So you certainly can do that if you want to stay away from that special permit. But we do not recommend increasing the minimum parking requirements. Leave that gap, leave that flexibility. You know, we talked about in a memorandum, there are other forces at work when it comes to parking. Not only the zoning is a piece of this, but there are the market considerations where the developer has to answer to the target audience and the lifestyle that they want. There's the banks and the financing stack as well. So a lot of those parties will want to make sure that you have enough parking. So no one's going to underpark. I really just don't think that that's a major risk for you. So I think just allowing that flexibility, giving them some room to play with different options with their pro forma, with their financiers and with your regulations is important. I would recommend significantly softening the loading requirements. Like right now, it's very strict. It's like you must have dedicated space for every business, I believe is the way it's written. And in every mixed use environment that is successful, far more, far more buildings have no loading than those that do. And, you know, this is part of doing business. They figure out ways to do this all over the country every day. Trucks show up early, trucks show up late. Delivery services have a wide variety of vehicles, a wide variety of sizes. They can park in the parking area, you know, at certain times of the day. So I think that this is, this is an area that you can just consider like significantly relaxing and just asking them to show you where it might happen during site plan review. And if it looks reasonable, I think you can move on from that issue. And then a sort of small thing that Kathy raised, and we agree, is that, you know, this is kind of an incremental thing. The parking stall standards now are at 10 feet for minimum width, and you can reduce that to nine feet if developers feel they need 10, depending on who's going to be living there or, you know, how they best feel things are going to play out. They can do that certainly. But giving them that flexibility, reducing that, you know, five foot, you know, over the courses of 50 spaces, that adds up. And this may be lastly here, the design standards. So we sort of took a step back looking at this and kind of one of the first things we see here is that your design standards haven't been updated in over a decade. They still look good. They still have a lot of good material in there, but it's probably time for a refresher. And if that is something that were to recur, you could consider pulling the VCOD into this new document. One of the things that we had to refresh our memory on is like, how much teeth, how much weight do you give these design standards? And you really do give them some heft. So they're not very soft design guidelines. They're pretty, they're pretty strong. And the way you, and the way you review them is pretty strong. So in that regard, I think you're not really sacrificing much by taking the VCOD design standards and moving them into that document. And it gives you an opportunity to sort of redo all that at once. And then lastly, you know, just reflecting on the experience we just had talking with developers, it would be good to try to get granular with some of these developers and looking at the design standards. We've had, you know, very candid discussions with developers and other communities, and they'll just say, it's the lighting, I can't deal with the lighting. These things are so expensive, these light posts that you're asking for, and can you just change that? And it'll be good to, great to get some of that feedback, just to see what people have to say and to see how that adds to their expenses going forward and see if you want to make changes based on those recommendations. I think that may be your last slide.
Yes, it is.
That's it.
Thank you, Nate. That was, that was really a very good summary. I also, just as an opening comment, I want to thank you and the, and the team for giving me a tutorial on VCODs. You know, we only, we only dive into them when something comes in front of us. But your evaluation of where they're similar and where they're not made me go back to my zoning bylaw and actually look at it. And so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. And Kathy has always been a fan of trying to take a broader look at these, at our bylaw and trying to streamline it a little bit. And so I find your comments to be, to be very helpful and we appreciate your evaluation. But I'd like to open it up to questions and comments. Kathy, I didn't know if you had any to start with, or we'll just go to the board members, whatever you prefer.
No, I think this is the, you know, the initial discussions, obviously. There's a lot of things that being presented here that would require us to have a lot of conversations with our community and hopefully move some of these suggestions forward. But there needs to be more detailed discussion about it, but it's a very, very good start.
Madam Chair, just jump in.
Mr. Smith, yes.
And also thank you, because I did the same thing you did. I went and last, you know, today at work, I actually spent a little time going through the book and seeing the VCOD information and bylaws and saying, holy smokes, there is a lot there and there's a lot that's the same. And there's such little idiosyncrasy difference in some of them, that I do think this really should be taken as an eye opening standpoint to say, you know what, let's take a good hard look at it. There's a lot of material and I think this is going to take, you know, a lot to go through it. And I think the number one factor driving what we're trying to do here is projects that come in front of us, they really have to be fiscally able to get the project done. That's really what's going to drive stuff happening. And if we can take down some of the roadblocks to make it happen, I think we should take a good hard look at it.
Peter?
I will, in support of our current zoning bylaws, as a commercial appraiser, I will say that I find our detailed use section very helpful if I can go there and not have to question whether or not what I'm appraising is allowed by right or not. So, but I understand it is lengthy, so. That was pretty much the only comment I was going to add.
I would, I would like to make the comment that under, you've mentioned a couple of times, Nate, that the recommendation that we allow two family homes in the VCOD, I'm not sure if you know this, but, and you probably do, but the public may not know, the planning board put forth an amendment several years ago to do just that. And in a particular VCOD two, was it two Kathy? I forget.
Was it all of them?
Oh, it was all of them. It was all of them, to allow duplexes to families. And the board, the select board at the time, and one member in particular was just adamantly opposed to it, and so we pulled it and we did not go forward with it, even though we had some community support for it. So I look forward to putting that back on the table for something for us to do either incrementally or as part of a broader review of your recommendations as we go forward. That was, quite frankly, a disappointment for us. We had had developers come forward who had indicated an interest that this would work for them because of building code, apparently there are different building codes when it's only a two family. And so I appreciate the fact that that is front and center in your, in your report.
Can I add to that quickly? I heard your point, Nate, and you had mentioned that we have a lot of small parcels and adding duplexes by right might allow some infill or allow that use to sort of fill some of those spaces. I mean, small parcels is really all Route 28. I don't know what the percentage is, but it's, it's pretty much, if you're, if you're, everything's under an acre pretty much, except for the corner lots and a few other lots. And I just wonder how that can age down the line, allowing duplexes by right, because there are a lot of properties, again, as an appraiser, I was curious. I went back and looked since 2023. I found 13 commercial property sales on Route 28, and the average lot size was .38 acres, you know, out of those 13 sales.
Point three eight?
Point three eight acres. So, you know, there was the little caboose sold, and that was .7 acres, but then on Bridge Street, next to the gas station, it was .07 acres. So there's a wide range, but the average on the 13 was .38. I didn't count the shopping center sales, Harthorne Kettle Plaza, Jack bought the center across from the next where the Cavaliers to be.
Up a western, I remember.
And Cranberry Bog Plaza was bought. So I didn't count the larger plazas, but just looking at the smaller owner occupied type properties. So there are a lot of, allowing duplexes might open up that for a lot of people.
I don't think the density would change. The point of the duplexes was really what Joanne was talking about, was it was the building code and that with duplexes, you didn't need sprinklers, but with anything more than that, you need to have sprinkled building. And that adds cost to a project.
building. And that adds cost to a project. And that's why the developer was hoping to move forward. I don't know whether the current, the new building code does anything with that with duplexes or not. But that was the impetus to try and do it. The density wouldn't change. So you'd still be allowed X amount of units per acre. It was just the type of units, like they were talking about getting more granular in the types that we're allowing and allowing duplexes. It helps people with costs because it decreases things like sprinklers.
Yeah, you certainly can, you know, it would, it could be an opportunity on those smaller lots. I mean, I live in a duplex. I'm sitting in my duplex right now, and my lot is .3 acres. It's a three-story duplex building, very comfortable fit. But I think the other opportunity is, you know, and like Jeremy's probably seen this type of thing before, is when you think back to his sketches, and he may have had a, you know, mixed-use concept. He and Erica put some mixed use on Route 28. That backspace, you know, they were trying to maximize sort of that true mixed-use feeling. But, you know, putting three or four duplexes in that backspace is a very affordable way to sort of like fill in that area, transition into residential area, look great, provide some natural affordability, and not have super high parking demand. So like, there's, there's different ways to weave that in there and just sort of like maximize or optimize that, that space, even in larger places.
Yeah. I was going to mention, if you look at our website, you'll find a lot of projects where we are basically designing at multifamily densities, but with single-family detached or duplex types, just in close proximity and with small footprints. Because that does, to Kathy's point, mean you can build in the residential code, not the, you know, the more commercial IVC code. So you're delivering a high density, but in types that are more affordable, that are also, by the way, a little more valuable, too, right? The average person's willing to pay more for a little standalone cottage than they are something that's attached to six other units. So I think that's, we're just trying to build in that little bit of flexibility, if there's any, any way to allow for that.
So was the selectmen's disagreement with it? Because I agree with that, allowing it as a, as almost an accessory use or as another use on the property. But the selectmen didn't, you made it sound as though it was a standalone, the only use on the property, duplex. They didn't like that, I know?
I can't recall specifically.
I thought it, go ahead, Susan.
It was mostly, and this, of course, goes to a conversation we're just having, back in the day, it was mostly designed. Now, keep in mind, there was a, there was a, there's a goal in the town for homeownership. Duplexes say rental. That's number one. And that, a lot of people were concerned about introducing a lot of rentals into what is currently a homeowner neighborhood. Combined with the recommendation that they're talking about, about loosening design standards, that was just a killer to some of the residents, saying, you're going to double the density, and they're going to look hideous. So that was, there was a real backlash over it. And it was very visceral. And, you know, it wasn't explained properly. So if we're going to support duplexes, and they can be very, very nice. There's a lot of duplexes in my neighborhood that are very, if they're designed properly and look lovely, there's not going to be a backlash to it. But drive down West Yarmouth Road, about a quarter of a mile on the right-hand side, and there's got to be, I think, six or seven units that are duplexes. That is what they want to avoid. Look at how horrible that, it's not the residents' fault, but they're not maintained. There's parking on the front lawn. There's no green space. There's, you know, cars all over the place. That's people's idea of a duplex. And that shouldn't be their idea of a duplex.
This was just in the VCOD.
I think what happened at the, I think what Susan's referring to is that there were some, my recollection, there were some members of the board whose vision of duplexes were Townhouse Road going to the dump.
Right.
Were West Yarmouth Road. Whereas, we had a developer who had come forward with some preliminary plans, I think had actually gone to site plan review, with development in VCO, in a VCOD on Route 28. And we are, at the time, the planning board and the public thought this was a really good idea. And again, a single member of the board convinced others, from my recollection, and they said, no. And so we couldn't go forward.
I think the other thing is that we were making a lot of changes to the VCOD, but that were going to help the Parker's River Landing project. And we didn't want to get those good, basic.
Yeah, we had to make those changes, yeah.
Yeah, we really needed to make those changes. We didn't necessarily want to kind of divert the attention or bog it down with, with this particular thing, knowing that we could bring it back at a future date with more education to the public.
It was linked, it was linked to what we absolutely needed.
Wanted to get down.
We absolutely needed that for, for the Parker's River Landing. But, yes, certainly.
In my experience with real estate, to make a change successful, it has to be incremental. These, we have to make small steps. Huge sweeping change in real estate doesn't work. People get overwhelmed with it. You know, density, design, setbacks. So if we're going to pick up, you know, a notion and support, let's say we decide to move forward with doing something about with duplexes. It has to be, I think, well-thought-out, incremental, and say, this is just a small piece of the real estate picture. This is what we're going to examine, and, and make it work. And then people see success by, but, but I think advocating huge changes in by right, huge changes in design, huge changes in, you know, whether it's going to be duplex or standalone, I think is just too overwhelming. And, and my experience is if you do have a plan, pick something in the plan, work it through, do it right, then you've got, you've got one, one brick in the wall.
That's exactly what we were trying to do with that VCOD. We picked one district on 28 and thought, let's start, let's start in this one small zoning district, because it was interest. It wasn't the whole town. We weren't saying duplexes everywhere, anywhere. And, you know, we just didn't have the support of the board, which is unfortunate. But maybe we now will, on some of these changes, which I hope will be important. I did want to raise a couple of other questions on the report. And this goes, Peter, to your question to Kathy today with regard to minimum size. You had sent her a note. In the, in your report, you had mentioned, let the developers propose as many units as they can park, because parking will be.
What page do you enjoy?
I'm on, I'm on seven of 13. And you also recommended removing minimum square footage for unit size. What has been your experience with that in other communities? And I know that Kathy got back to us with what we have here or with the code. I know I have the piece of paper somewhere, Kathy.
Same, same here. I'm like, where is that?
Where is that piece of paper?
Peter has it somewhere.
Oh, I have it here. Affordable standards are different than regular. But I'm just curious, that recommendation, where have you found that to be, you know, beneficial in other, in other projects that you've worked on?
So, so there's, I think you raised two issues, the density piece and then the unit size. Is that right?
Yeah, the density, not so much. I think we're done with the two-family duplex thing. But on unit size?
Unit size, I, my memory is not what it used to be, I will admit. If you, you look at the color of the hair on top, there was not this color back in 2012 when we were starting the VCOD. But in my 25 years now of doing this type of work, I think I can only remember one other community that regulates, that regulated bedroom size. And I can almost, unit size. There were probably, this is a separate issue that you're not dealing with, but I can probably think of a half a dozen communities in all my experience that regulated bedroom counts. So they would say, oh, we want no more than this many studios, or we want this minimum percent of two-bedroom, or, you know, that sort of thing. So that they're sort of tampering with the, with the market a little bit. But that's sort of a different issue. That's all to say that it's rare. It's, it's quite rare to see communities, at least it has been in my experience, that regulate the size of a unit. I understand the concern, right? You don't, you don't want unlivable units. But there's sort of two things going on. I think of it as like, not a value judgment, but like sort of positive, negative influences. So like, on the, on the, you know, on, on one end, small units, units that, that we might find it hard to believe people find attractive, are very attractive to a lot of people. People are living in super small units. And a lot of these units are being fully furnished and decked out and micro-designed by the developer. So you, it's turnkey. You, you walk in, and there's all your stuff. And there's your units. Right? That's sort of an extreme version. But it is to say that a lot of folks are very comfortable, especially if they can afford it, living in a nice, small, a nice small unit. And, you know, again, just to sort of reiterate the, you know, that what's, what's driving this is the parking, you know, that, that is, that is really going to sort of regulate the, the number of units. And no one's going to finance, the bank's not going to finance, the, the investors are not going to finance projects that, you know, that, that have unlivable, unlivable units. You have the added layer of, you know, your building official, your building inspector, looking at these things. There are a lot of other forces at work. So, you know, a lot of times, we'll talk about, we sort of step back and we say, okay, what, what's, where does zoning work best? And, and this is an issue where we just don't feel like zoning really works well. It's not a great place for it. We have seen some communities, this can be onerous, but they've asked for floor plans, like, what's it going to look like? But again, you know, in Massachusetts, things get a little dicey when a zoning review starts going inside the building, like, from a legal perspective. You try to stay away from that. You know, you're looking at the exterior, the form, the location, the light, the, the, you know, the site, in terms of the design. Like, that's, that's the lane that zoning drives in. And as soon as you are getting into the, the interior of the building, you know, typically in our practice, we, we try to get people to, to back off, to have boards back off, and let other, other issues kind of drive the boat there.
Thank you, Nate. Any other, any other questions? Kathy, are you, you're good?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Great. Nate, Nate, thank you so much. Again, I, I, I appreciate the fact that you, you somehow made me go back to my zoning bylaw and look at it again. As a member of the planning board, I think that's important.
You don't read zoning every night for, for pleasure?
I know. I should be doing, I really should be doing that. Do you have a podcast going that I could, I could join in?
I can imagine. Two followers.
I really, I really appreciate your time this evening. Thank you so much.
That was great. Thanks.
Okay.
Could I make just, I just wanted to make two very, two very general statements before we, we end up leaving. One is, I did want to thank the couple of folks, the couple of developers that joined us for that fiscal feasibility conversation. Kathy would know who they are if you guys are curious. But I also wanted to share that they were very appreciative of the fact that they were being asked to weigh in on these things. And they were very open to continuing to weigh in on these things. And I do think it is a clever way of thinking about, you know, Nate suggested, if you're rewriting your design standards, have a conversation with them to understand what the real pinch points are, or the real problematic spot, so that you know what you're really trying to address or change. So again, I just wanted to give them sort of a public thank you. And they themselves suggested they'd be happy to continue these conversations moving forward. And the other general point I just wanted to state is, you know, I just want to make sure it's clear, too, that I think the overarching goal here is to try to simplify the regulations, not to get rid of the regulations. You know, what I'm trying to suggest, you know, there are no setbacks. There are no coverages. There are no, you know, it's really about trying to take something that might be onerous at the moment and make it sort of as simple as possible, just to reduce the number of calls Kathy gets to try to clarify something, the number of meetings you have to have with that team to try to get through something in approvals process. It's really about simplification, not sort of opening the floodgates or suddenly suggesting, you know, everything should have a thousand units built on it. So I just, I did want to just sort of state that publicly, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. We, we really appreciate your efforts here, your team, Erica, as well. Thank you so much for helping us along on this important journey that we're on right now. Thanks again.
I would also like to thank them, especially considering that we had such a short timeframe. You've done an astounding amount of work in a very short period of time and very high quality. So very much appreciated.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job.
Now we got to do something with it.
Finish the LCP, people.
Something with it.
That's the first thing to finish.
We, we've got something going here. That's a good thing.
Yep, that's great.
That's a good thing. Next on our agenda, Matta Key's update.
The only thing I would say is that the, the survey is out and available, and it's open through June 30. And that the MUC is going to be having a community workshop on July 15. It's going to be here at 6 o'clock in the, in the hearing room, and also via remote access. Very similar format as what we had for the January LCP, where there'll be a presentation, and then there will be some facilitated questions, kind of hone in on some of, looking for some additional information based on some of the survey results that, that were received, and where else we need to kind of, you know, get some additional public input on.
Kathy, is the survey on the town website or the Matta Keys?
Go to the Matta Keys Utilization Project.
It's there. Okay.
Yep. And the link should be right there.
Okay.
Next on our agenda, meeting minutes. May I have a motion to accept the minutes of June 4, 2025?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Committee updates.
Library building committee.
Yes, I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you an update. And we, I was, from personal observation, it was a tremendous amount of work in, in six weeks. I mean, we were here all the time, very, very time-intensive, reviewing proposals, reviewing, you know, credentials for architects, but very worthwhile. So that was one observation. The second, now that it's, and of course, the outcome was that the Simmskan Field across the street has been identified as the preferred site for, for a new library. Although I must say, in the public meetings that we had, and we had multiple, and all the, all the project meetings were open to the public, and people did come. Neighbors did show up. There was still a very strong sentiment, though, for local libraries. And we, with library people, always say, my local library. So there was, and the sentiment last night was that, at least my observation was, that the, the new library is almost like a replacement for South Yarmouth. And West Yarmouth, one of the recommendations from the, from the project, we had four recommendations, or four pieces of the recommendation, was that the board absolutely gives serious consideration to keep West Yarmouth Library open. That is another whole other conversation, what that all means. But from a process point of view, I have to tell you, I was, I think the town got cheated. I think the, the project team itself got cheated. And this is sort of a cautionary tale of what happens when you take other people's money. When you take state money, it comes with a lot of strings. And the ability, at least, again, I thought there was going to be a lot more analysis about, not so much the architects, because their credentials were well, they were well laid out. I thought there was going to be a lot more conversation about the site. Because of our long-range plan, what we've talked about, you know, in terms of developing the town, what the town wants, so much of that conversation was limited or non-existent because the state didn't allow it. It wasn't, it wasn't part of the evaluation criteria. So I was thinking, you know, thinking several times, gee, that might be great for the state, but is it really good for Yarmouth? And I think some of the other, there was, there was not, there wasn't, there was no, but I think there was a recognition that maybe if we had done, if the town had been planning this, and the town was going to pay for it, the conversation, I think, would have been entirely different. There was a lot of conversation about Matta Keys. And, and, and it should have been more fruitful, I think, in my opinion, because a lot of people think the library, if we're going to have a civic center, that would be a perfect place to put it. But because of the timeframe, the library board had to get this thing done and ready and schematics to the state by December, and Matta Keys isn't even going to be fully developed. So we couldn't have that conversation. I think the town, I think it's a loss for the town, quite frankly, because I think we should have had that conversation. The residents should have been able to have a real thoughtful discussion. The, the residents should have been able to have a real thoughtful discussion about what would happen if we put the library there, maybe move Town Hall there, then that frees up this space to do something else, with the space across the street to do commercial development as opposed to a civic center. That is kind of our long-range thinking that we would, that, we could not have that conversation. Um, and I, and I think, I think, um, I think the town was diminished by it. I really think the town should have been able to have a, the timeframe didn't work, they have, they have this deadline that they have to meet. So much of the criteria on site selection was dictated by the state. Um, and, um, like so much packing, expansion. The expansion discussion, I thought, was like ludicrous, uh, cause we talked about not doing anything beyond 10 years. Don't plan on anything beyond 10 years. They wanted expansion space for 25 years from now. Uh, several people got up in the audience and held up their cellphone and said, you know, this is what kids are using now for a library, they're using their phone. Um, they use their phone to get all sorts of information. 25 years from now, libraries may be smaller. Uh, they may be just doing discs and thumb drives and all that kind of stuff, they may be smaller. We couldn't have that conversation because the state requirement for this project was, you had to have expansion space in 25 years. Do I think that's realistic? No. And I think it, again, cut down on a fruitful discussion about sites that we could have looked at, but couldn't because, because of that requirement. Parking, again, it, parking was driven by the size of the building. The size of the building was basically driven by a lot of criteria that the state said, if you've got a director, it has to have your office. If you've got this, you have to have this kind of space. So the types of space and the, the dimensions of the space were, a lot of it was, was, um, uh, an artifact of the state. The state people think this is what the library will look like. Um, and the library board did what a board should do. I mean, years ago, the libraries, as we all know, were woefully underfunded, and they went looking for money because they had to do something. And they, they got accepted into this loop of getting state funding, and, um, there are a lot of strings of it. I think it's a caution, if we're ever gonna do something like this again, I think people ought to realize exactly what comes with taking state funding for something, a project like this. Uh, because what may be great for Yarmouth, uh, the state's gonna say, no, we, we know better, or this is what, you're gonna use our money? This is what your place is gonna look like. Um, and, and that was, I mean, we, we came to a conclusion, I think, um, I, West Yarmouth, the, the, uh, public hearing a week ago last night, this room was filled, they were standing out on the hall, uh, 90% of them were West Yarmouth people, uh, very dedicated to the library. I think this, Buddhist luckman really, really, um, uh, recognized that. If you, if we really believe in the free village concept, that is the anchor of the West Yarmouth Village. Uh, and I think the economic opportunity for development is huge, uh, couldn't talk about it because the site was too small. I said something about, well, we, we could, we could get building close to that if we did two stories. Ah, it's not efficient. What's the trade-off between efficiency and maybe developing, you know, really developing a West Yarmouth Village with huge economic opportunities? Cause that end of 28 is gonna come online for us, and that's the end that really has economic development opportunity. Uh, so it was a mix, it was a mixed bag, very, very hard, um, very thoughtful, they did, we did a tremendous, you know, a lot of work. Bill Scott was phenomenal guiding us through the whole thing. Uh, Judy did a great job as the chair. Um, and I think if we'd had more time, honestly, I think that we, they, we may even have another public hearing, uh, to go over some of the findings, uh, but the time schedule was really murderous. Uh, and, uh, but anyway, we presented last night, they were all, and, and off we go.
Okay.
I remember, uh, I was on the Fin, Fin, uh, FinCom for a long time, 20 years ago, the, the same conversation about creating a new library came up then, and one of the committee members stood up with his Kindle, he goes, this is a Kindle, we won't even have libraries in 20 years from now.
Oh.
You know, and that was.
Oh, yeah.
Here we are.
Yep.
Same conversation.
Yeah, it's too, and you know, it's, it's a civic entity. It's too bad the town, you know, we, uh, you know, these, these, these grants tend to, you know, be given to the poorer towns. Um, if we had the money, we probably would be fixing, because everyone loves South Yarmouth, everyone loves West, we'd be sort of beefing up what we have and retaining the historic and the charm and the, and the history of those two entities. Because everyone is, you know, upset that South Yarmouth is gonna go not be a library. At least it will be, they, there's some movement now to have it as a museum. Someone apparently has come forward and expressed an interest in having a museum. Uh, so the building and the, sort of the community that's developed down there will be, will be, will be retained. If the, so, it, you, beware when you take other people's money.
But I think that it was so obvious that it wasn't gonna be the town's priority. Uh, and when the money came up, the opportunity, um, if, if we didn't submit the grant proposal for this time, we would have to wait 10 years.
Oh, yeah. And, and I think. They struck while the iron was hot, I don't blame them.
And I also think the concept of the library has so much changed to being a place for community actions and meeting places.
Yep.
And that, that our current buildings couldn't handle that, so.
There's a tremendous amount of meetings that go on in the library. I mean, some woman in Stop and Shop that lives in Swan Pond, they have like a crochet group that meets at the library. Um, yeah, it's a much more, there are a lot of people do, I don't know why, cause I've seen Joanne Crowley does this over at the senior center, why they're doing tax returns in the library when I know you're doing it at the senior center. Um, so yes, you're, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. The whole notion of libraries has changed from just a, a bus to go learn something to community, to creating community, which really only enforced the West Yarmouth idea because that is the center of our community. So it was very interesting, it was very interesting. I, I just don't think that, that, we may have ended up in the same place, but I wish we had a better discussion about it, yeah.
Okay. Any other committee, uh, reports out? Uh, I do have one quick one. Uh, the Community Preservation Committee did meet, uh, last week. Um, and we've laid out our calendar for the coming year in terms of proposals and projects. Um, and we'll be, that, uh, I think, um, the notice for, uh, project solicitations will be out soon, so we'll be ramping that up, um, for the fall. We also had, um, an executive session with regard to the purchase of property that the town is interested, um, in acquiring. Uh, I can't disclose where it is or what it is. Uh, but I, one of my comments that I made was, um, with regard to, um, the, the town partnering with CPA funds on the purchase of, of land, um, and that other sources like free cash, um, and, and perhaps even capital if it's appropriate, um, and that there, there be some kind of, uh, partnering and not just a come-to-the-bank, the CPA, cause we have money for open space to buy it. Um, so we'll, we'll see where all of that happens. We're waiting for appraisals and things like that, but we wanted to kind of give a wink and a nod to go forward on it, so. So that was my meeting last week. Board member items? Any other individual board member items?
Just one thing, um, last night at the B O S, um, and this may end up, they may come in front of the planning board to give us a presentation. There's a new company in town going to do, is it fiber optics? That's the stuff they put on the poles.
It's fiber, yep.
Uh, in competition with Comcast. Uh, they're just getting organized, they've, apparently they've done some work already in the western part of the state, it's called Gateway, uh, made a very nice presentation. There will, it will be competition for, for Comcast. Uh, they may, they, they may be doing some outreach to the various boards, just to come and make presentations and let us know what's going on. Uh, but the board, the select board was very encouraged to see that we're gonna have some competition, uh, for, um, what is that, fiber optics? I, I don't know anything about that stuff, but, uh, competition for Comcast. Uh, so that was one, that was a, that was a, I think, a, a brand-new information that people had no idea was going on.
Okay.
It's great news.
That's what everyone said last night, great news, yeah.
Uh, any, anything from you, Kath, in addition? I mean, we went through the special town meeting calendar. Are we good, we good on everything else? We're good?
So.
Okay. Uh, our next meetings are July 2nd. Um, I apologize, Kathy, I, I think I sent you a note regarding July 3rd.
Oh.
For me, it's not July 3rd, the meeting is July 2nd.
I know what you meant, yeah. It's next week, isn't it?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I thought we had just made a decision to.
Maybe, maybe not.
Canceling that.
Yeah, we did, so that's why I'm raising it.
Because I think the meeting, I'd say the eight, July 18th, I think I made a mistake, it's July 16th.
It's July 16th.
And, um, but I think that's where we're, I'm gonna, we need to start talking about the zoning changes and start drafting some stuff, and I need to have a little bit of time to coordinate with, um, other people, the, the building commissioner, as well as the, um, proponents of some of the changes and their attorneys and stuff, so that we can get some language down.
Yep.
And, and, and start moving that forward.
So, no meeting on July 3rd?
That would be great.